Well, it's three o'clock and time for the regular meeting of the Allen County Board of Library Trustees for this September 22nd, 2022. If we could have a roll call.
Certainly. Mr. Eisbart?
Present.
Ms. Tucker? Mr. Seifert? Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Moss?
Here.
Mr. Castleman?
Present.
Ms. Shaminoff? Present. So, we have five out of seven so far.
Five seventh and two on account of four.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can I have a motion that we adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Let's move to the approval of the minutes. Unless there are any objections, we'll group them all. Any objections? Looking for a motion to approve the following: the minutes of the regular session of August 25th, 2022; the minutes of the executive session of August 25th, 2022; the minutes of the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting of August 24th, 2022; the minutes of Capital Projects Executive Session, September 9, 2022; and the minutes of approval of the claims, September 9, 2022. You have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Paul.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay. Let's move to Dave's part.
Thank you.
The financial report.
Thanks, Ben. In your packet are your financial reports. Couple of lines to report on. One is the vehicle fuel, and we've kind of talked about that before, just with the price of gas. That's going and spending ahead of schedule, so we'll see how that is at the end of the year, if we need to move some money in. Cleaning supplies, with us going full into the whole operation, the programming and everything, we're back up to what was the 2019 levels of needs for cleaning supplies and the activities related to that. So, that one, I'll need to move some money in by the end of the year, then. We'll bring those into the December meeting as budget transfers. Those are the only lines to report on at this point. A couple of news items. First one, budgets. We did, Susan and I did meet with the Department of Local Government Finance. They gave us the green light to move ahead with our '23 budget. We have since posted the legal notice, so that our public hearing, which by the way is scheduled for October 17th, and then the final passage will be at the October Board Meeting on the 27th. That's been officially posted for the public. And then, the other thing to report on is the Finance and Personnel Committee met yesterday, again, to discuss the compensation program, the surveys that we have been doing, and the results of those surveys that came back, and then also heard about our benefit program, the insurances, the re-insurances, things like that. I know Susan and all are in the process of setting up another meeting, which is the one where we will actually bring a proposal to that committee meeting, '423, and as you may recall, we always then bring that for passage at the November Board Meeting. So, those are really the news and notes. I thought I'd, though, throw in here, I talked with a couple of you yesterday after the F and P meeting. You're seeing a lot of, some news articles about tax rates, and, you know, to certain entities, whether I know, you know, Southwest Allen County Schools just put, had an article in the paper. Regarding our tax rate, we are looking at a reduction of 7.96, almost 7.97 percent in our tax rate. That includes, you know, while our budget's going up because the assessed value has grown, gone up for the county from 19 billion to 21 billion, we're getting the benefit of that. That's also an interesting aspect, that if I add in the proposed debt service tax rate, that would be on the bonds, should they go ahead and, you know, be issued, we would still be 6% less than what our tax rate was in 2020, which was the last full year of the bond debt service. So, thank you to the assessed value. We are coming in way below. And again, those are using the maximum parameters on that bond issue. Right now, it's figuring a 6% bond issuance rate, and this morning, the 20-year, which is our bond, would be 3.75. So, there's still quite a bit. So, anyway, those are some of the news and notes I just wanted to pass on.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can I have a motion, then, to accept the financial report, as David just stated?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Two passes. Let the record show that Marty came in. He was probably checking out books.
Carl, please.
How about the claims? We have a few.
Yes, I have today's claims. The total of the claim register is 1.2 million, of which the highest claim is for insurance premiums. They total 308,000 for our property casualty liability insurance, is the thing. So, the next one is 62,000 for Indiana Michigan Electric, so those are the main items.
Okay. We'll pass those around for signature. If I could have a motion for the approval of claims?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? LaRae?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to introduce everybody, if you haven't met them already. We've had a few personnel changes, and wanted to put a face to a name for you all, so in no particular order, just because he's sitting next to me. This is Matt Etzel. Matt has been with us since 2018. He was the manager of the Reader Services Department, and is now the Collection Services Manager. If you remember, that's a new position that we added this year, so we're glad Matt's here. Shannon Aker has been here for 16 years, most recently as the Security Supervisor, and she is now our Safety and Security Manager, and we are thrilled to have her in that role, so.
Well, thank you, and welcome.
I'm going to jump across the room to Allison over there by Kurt. Allison has been with us since 2016. She was a Senior Librarian in the Genealogy Center, but she's actually been acting Genealogy Services Manager for the past year, and has officially moved into that role, so we're so glad that Allison's here as well. And last, but not least, I'm going to jump to this corner. If you haven't met Elena Massey yet, she is our new Executive Assistant. She started, this is her second week, so she's been, we pushed her right into it, so. And again, a huge thank you to Michelle for helping out in the interim when Helen left, so.
And Elena came to us as an Executive Assistant at the East Wayne Street Center.
So, just wanted everybody to meet them.
Well, thank you for the introduction. Congratulations on the move up and the move in, and we look forward to working with you. Okay, our summer learning program. Where, I don't see Mar.
She's right there.
Oh, there's Mar.
Are you going to make me go up there?
You can go up there. You're the star of the show.
Well, but only for three minutes, so we can talk fast.
If you could stay to three minutes, you would be a star.
I'm going to talk fast. There's always so many great things to talk about, but lots of other great things, too. So, the 2022 Summer Learning Program really remarked, or really marked a return to a rethought normal, and I think that's really important, as we're looking at what the summer learning program means to our library and to our community. So, we took a lot of what we had done in the past, and we're thrilled to be able to bring back some of those big things, like we had in a local woman who is a Cirque du Soleil-trained aerialist, who brought in her full setup right here in the main library in many of our branches, and put on a performance, and also then allowed every single child to sit in her performance silks that was, that wanted to. And that was one of our most beloved programs, because she did a wonderful job of combining acrobatics with physics with "you can do anything you dream." And it was really a wonderful message for us this summer, when our theme was Oceans of Possibility, and we were looking at bringing back those things that our community loves. But we have learned from COVID, as I hope we all have, and have incorporated some new things into our program. Most markedly changed was our Team Read program, and I know I mentioned some of the changes that we were looking towards in May, and it was really great to see them come together. We hired our full complement of teens, which is 36 teens who do outreach at parks locations across the city, Boys and Girls Club, YMCA's, and other places where children are spending time during the summer. Also this year, because 2021 was such a remarkable year for Team Read, when those teens actually found employment at their local library branches, we did offer returning teens the opportunity to work in their library locations again. And of our returners, we had six teens who returned to, who wanted to return to the program this year, one of whom we hired into actually a higher-paying position, which she absolutely deserved, but also as a temporary staff member, and two that worked at the Aboit Library, one who returned and chose to work in our Teen Services Department, and then two other returning teens who said, "No, I want to get, get out there and connect through the regular Team Read program." And so, that is what happened, except that it's never summer unless, you know, something exciting happens. And so, we did have one of our Team Read supervisors, who was offered a wonderful opportunity back at the school where she teaches, and so left partway through the summer, and we were all very sad, and she said, "But this is an opportunity to allow these two teens who were returners." One of these young men worked for Team Read in 2019, 20, we didn't have Team Read in 2020, 2021, and then he came back in 2022. So, she said, "Give them a chance to take on a leadership role." And so, that's what we did. We gave them a little bit of a financial boost, and gave them some additional responsibilities, and they stepped into that in a really remarkable way. And now, one of those teens is providing some additional support for just five hours a week at our Georgetown Library, and she has carried that Team Read magic, that wonderful connection between teens and younger students into a middle school audience. So, those things are groundbreaking when we think about, how does this program really impact the teens that we serve, the children that we serve, our community, and our organization? And I think it's pretty deep. As far as nuts and bolts numbers, because everybody wants to know that, our numbers were lower than they were in 2019, but certainly higher than they were in 2020 or 2021. We had about 13,000 readers who were tracking their reading time this summer to earn exciting prizes and books. We gave away over 15,000 books in all corners of our community, not only as prizes that were earned, but also through a variety of outreach initiatives, and of course, through Team Read. Summer is all about the books, and that matters a lot to us. We also continued to serve lunches at eight of our library locations. We served a little less than 9,000 lunches in partnership with Fort Wayne Community Schools this year, and actually, I just got an email from Fort Wayne Community Schools today, that said that the turn up the beat, kick up, turnip the beat? Uh-huh, yeah, okay. Kickoff celebration that was hosted here at the main library plaza, that LeAnn and Cara from our Communications Department put so much work into, was such a huge success that they've actually entered that in to win a, an honor, an award, from the Indiana Department of Education and the USDA. So, I think there's a lot to be proud of, and we are already starting to plan next summer's program, which is All Together Now, and that gives us a lot of really tremendous opportunities to think about what does together look like when we're looking outside of our library walls and into this amazing community that we're a part of. So, there you go.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
Comments? I wanted to thank you for the development of the summer reading program, from the aspect of the teens that you hired. I had the ability to speak with Charis, is it, from Georgetown, and she was going over the fact that, you know, when she was employed, when she was working as a teen, there wasn't the ability to, we're talking about futures, and now you're putting that into developing the students that you have now working on the program, so.
Thank you.
She couldn't say it, but I could say it for her. Kudos.
She's pretty magic. We are pretty lucky, and the fact, I think we've got some, we actually have a number of truly remarkable staff members who have come from the Team Read program, who continue to grow into working at the library, and it's one of, I think, anyone who's gotten the chance to work with them has seen what a gift it's been to our organization. Thank you for saying that.
How feasible is it to expand it to other locations?
Which aspect?
The whole, the summer program, moving it out beyond our current map.
So, as far as outreach, I think that's something that we are continuing to look at how we can better come alongside our community. I think frankly, having a Programs and Partnerships Director is a game changer when it comes to how do we look outside of what we've done and come alongside the work that's already being done? Because there are so many remarkable organizations that are already doing great work, we want to be able to do what we do best to support the work that they do best.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, once again, you hit a home run.
Thank you. Sorry, it was like, at least six minutes.
Someone from the DEI team here?
We have multiple people from our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion team here, and I will let them come up and introduce themselves, and I'm so excited about what they are going to be presenting this afternoon.
Next, and previous, there you go. So, howdy, guys. As you probably have known me for a little bit, I'm Donnie, I'm one of the event techs, but I also am one of the members of the DEI team here at the library. We've been together for about a year, give or take a minute, meeting about once a month, trying to get stuff done, and bringing forth, you know, a new chapter for the library, because this hasn't really been looked at or brought up much. So, one of the things that we started working on, more or less since day one, is a diversity statement, and this is kind of what we came up with. Lisi has been on it since day one, you know, kicking butt and taking names, so other than that, I will leave it to her to better explain how we got here.
Thank you, Donnie. As Donnie said, I am Lisi Walker. I am the Assistant Branch Manager at the Georgetown branch, and I'm here today to represent our DEI team for you guys. I want to start off by saying thank you for allowing us this time and space to present to you our diversity statement. This work is so necessary and so important to our employees and also to our community, so thank you for allowing us this time. We started, we started this, sorry, we started this process, like any good library team does, we started with research. We, we looked at other libraries' diversity statements, and we started pulling out the phrases and the meanings and the words that really resounded with us, and we thought reflected the values of ACPL. From there, we also generated an anonymous, open-ended survey, and asked all of our employees to respond, and the way we did this is we asked three questions, and those questions were, "Think about how we treat staff and patrons. What do you think the current values of ACPL are?" And we also asked, "What values would promote more diversity and inclusion at ACPL?" And "Think about the people in the community we serve. What values would support their needs?" And in this survey, we asked the staff to respond in concise, one-to-two-word answers. However, they were allowed to add as many values to each question as they found appropriate. And then, we took those, the information that we gathered from those surveys, and we used that in our feedback to sit down and write out our first draft. Once we had our first draft written, we took it to the team management meeting, and we presented it to them, and we also received really good feedback from our management team. We've also had the pleasure to have the Lanes, our DEI consultants, also sit in and look over our first draft, and they also provided us some feedback. And as each of our new leadership team members have joined us, they have also provided us with a lot of really important insight, as they have also worked on a lot of diversity and inclusion teams outside of ACPL as well. So, I'm sure you guys are pretty curious about what those survey results were. We had about 73 staff members respond, and what we did is, with those one-to-two-word answers, we pooled all of the responses that we got and put them in a word cloud for you guys here, and if you're unfamiliar with word clouds, what it does is it takes the words that are used the most and makes them bigger in the image, so that you have a visual representation of which words our staff feel are, answer the question best. So, in our first question, which was, "What do you think the current ACPL values are?", our top 10 words are respect, kindness, service, helpfulness, inclusion, welcoming, diversity, transparency, resources, and fairness. For the second question, "What values do you think will help us improve diversity at ACPL?", the 10, the top 10 answers were understanding, respect, empathy, communication, diversity, integrity, access, compassion, openness, and listening. And for the third question, you'll see that a lot of our top 10-word answers are the same. We see understanding, empathy, respect, communication, diversity, integrity, access, compassion, openness, and listening, and our staff felt that these were the best values to support our community and reflect the diversity that we have. So, without further ado, I will show you our proposed diversity statement, that we have taken all of the feedback from our staff, from our, our leadership, and taken that first rough draft, and really sat down with intentionality and put together this diversity statement. Everyone belongs at the Allen County Public Library. We are on a mission to recognize, cultivate, and celebrate diversity. We offer collections, services, programs, assistance, and spaces that enrich and reflect our community. We are committed to nurturing an inclusive workforce, and establishing ourselves as a communal space of respect, safety, and service. All are welcome at ACPL regardless of identity, origin, ability, religion, race, culture, socioeconomic status, age, or other disabilities or differences. I'm sure you're also curious about what our group's next steps are. Once the diversity statement is approved, we would like to put this on the website. We would like to add it to all of our open job listings. We would like to include it in the Human Resources monthly newsletters, and the Senior Management's Friday Letters as well, so that staff know that we heard them, we heard their feedback, and that we are here to support them and the community. We would also like to create diversity, equity, and inclusion goals to present to the Strategic Plan Committee. We are aware that the strategic plan is about to expire, and there will be a new one that is going to be written, and we want to be intentional in creating measurable goals that will help hold us accountable to this new statement, so that it's not just words, but also actions that we can be held accountable to. We would also like to research diversity, equity, and inclusion officer positions. There are several libraries that already have this team member added, and we would like to see if it's something that's feasible here at ACPL, as the team recognizes that we need to set aside time to dedicate to diversity, equity, and inclusion, because it is important, and the only way things get done is if we establish that time and set it up intentionally. We also heard in the feedback from our staff that they want us to listen, they want us to communicate, and they want us to be transparent in what we're doing, and one of our big goals is to start attending the monthly branch and department meetings to communicate our work and gather feedback, and build those relationships, so that we have honest and open communication with all of our employees here at ACPL. Thank you again so much, you guys, for your time. I'm so excited to be here and presenting this stuff. Did you have any questions for us?
Thank you for that presentation. That was quite concise and energizing.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you as well. I fully support the diversity statement. Actually, I think it worked great, the way you have it, the way you worded it. The two phrases I love are, "Everyone belongs," and "All are welcome." I think that is the heart of this, heart of this library and this community, and I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Marty, was that a motion?
Aye, we'll move to approve the diversity state, adopt the diversity statement.
I second.
Any further discussion? Well, this is a red-letter day. That's great. All those in favor of the proposed diversity statement, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Will you have your work product?
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Okay, committee reports. F and P, we have a committee report?
Not right now, like I said, we just met yesterday afternoon, and as I mentioned earlier, the main topic was reviewing the results of the salary surveys that were being conducted, as well as some of the insurance information that Frank Johnson presented to us. We're in the process of setting up the next meeting, probably late, mid to late October, where we'll actually have the proposal for 2023's Compensation and Benefit Program.
I'll be reaching out to all of you probably early next week with some date options.
And you'll be providing that, I think we asked for the information on the last survey, and I think you'll get that out to us again, for those of us who may not be able to locate it for this year's.
Time for the Executive Director's Report.
Time it is. I submitted a written report, some highlights tonight. At seven o'clock is our 2022 Roland Lecture, and our speaker is Susannah Colber, who is the Chief Curator and Research Officer at the Indiana State Museum and Historic Sites, and she will speak on topics related to Lincoln, the Black community, and the fight for emancipation and citizenship, so we hope you can join us. And I am glad that both Kurt and Allison are here today, because they just returned from a really special trip to Atlantic City as the guests of Lincoln Financial, and if they wouldn't mind speaking about that briefly.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you so much for this brief opportunity. I think it really emphasizes how important the library's lifelong learning mission is, and our commitment to serving our patrons. So, for the better part of a year, Allison and I have been working with the African-American Business Resource Group of Lincoln, just providing them with family history programs. They decided that in their quarterly meetings, they wanted to have something about family history, and we really are strongly committed to the power of story, and how story, everyone has a story, and it really changes people's lives knowing their story. So, they proposed, long story short, that we take our little quarterly meeting and make it an enterprise meeting, so we moved it to the enterprise level, and about 400 Lincoln people from around the country listened to the enterprise program, and one of those people was pretty high up in Lincoln's financial silo and said, "This is really good. We're going to have this at our Legal Beagle Retreat in Ocean City, New Jersey, in the fall," and so they invited Allison and I to be there in person, and I'll let Allison kind of take over from here. We did a Power of Story presentation, and then they gave Allison... then they gave Allison and the frontline staff at Genealogy Center, two volunteers gave us a little bit of information and said, can you find some of our story? We have a question about these parts of our family.
Thank you. So, we were able to do the research for those two different people and be able to tell those two stories and be able to engage with the audience as a whole and show them that their peers are able to find their stories. And in doing that and having the opportunity to interact with all of the people at this summit, they were able to ask us questions, and we were able to interact with them, do research for them on the fly, and be able to interest them in genealogy. I ran out of business cards, because people were that interested and engaged and wanted to know more.
Well, it was interesting. Two things. One, at Allison's table at dinner, we were invited to dinner before. She got on her smartphone and was searching ancestry and Googling things. We found Polish grave markers, and then the game was on to translate the Polish on those grave markers. I mean, it just rippled throughout the room. I wish there was like a hidden camera there just to show, just to emphasize the power of story. Everyone, you know, they had different interests, family groups, ethnic groups, everyone was like, really into doing that. The second thing, which I personally found really engaging, was the fact that during our official presentation the next day, during their motivational inspirational day, everyone was really plugged in. And the head of Lincoln Financial's legal division came up to us after the program, thanked us for doing it, and said, there's more possibilities here. I'll be in touch. So that's, all that started with the library's commitment to lifelong learning and to serving our patrons wherever they're at. So, a local group contacting us, going wide, company-wide, and then getting an opportunity to be in front of, I think, a lot of people who know people and have their networks in different places. So, it was, it was a good day for ACPL.
Great. Well, go ahead.
And they were completely hosted and sponsored by Lincoln Financial.
That's terrific. Another home run. That is absolutely great.
So, back to my report. These last few months, I've talked about our busy summer outreach season. Well, now it's the busy fall outreach season. September's been quite robust. We had a presence at the Welcome Week Resource Fair at the YMCA. We were at the Grayboll Country Fair Parade. This coming Sunday, I'm dusting off my puppets, and I'm going to do storytime at the World Rivers Day Festival at Promenade Park. We also were involved in, visit Fort Wayne to be a tourist in your hometown. Both the Nain Library and the Roland Center were participating sites. And despite kind of a dreary rainy day, we had a really nice turnout. Speaking of nice turnouts, we had a wonderful turnout at our first in-person staff training day in several years. It was Monday at the Muro Center, and I want to thank Jim Williams for coming out and spending some time with us. We enjoyed seeing him there. And I also want to thank you as the board for allowing us to close, to have the opportunity, and for the friends and foundation for their financial support. You can see at your place setting the program for the day. It goes over all of our activities. We had trainings on immigration, on avoiding burnout, on microaggressions, on de-escalation. And I have to give a huge shout out and thank you to Myra Presley, who is here. There she is. She is our still fairly new employee experience coordinator, and this was her first staff training day to organize for us, and she hit it out of the park. And we heard many, many comments that it was the best one that they had ever attended. And we also had a survey on the back to get folks' feedback, and one comment is that next year, they would like to see swing dancing. So, if anybody knows anyone, let me know. We're open.
Team building activity, maybe?
Wilder things out there, right? We had yoga and meditation this time, but who says we can't swing dance? And lots of activities this week. It's a busy week. We hope that we will see you tomorrow evening at our ribbon cutting for the story scape, the early learning center on tomorrow, Friday at 5:00 PM. I peeped in today, and they're doing some final preparations, and it looks amazing. And of course, the story scape was made possible through a generous donation from our Allen County Public Library Foundation. They will be hosting a reception in the Curl Gallery immediately following the ribbon cutting. We hope to see you there. Fall means flu shot season. So for a second year, Super Shot will be offering immunization clinics at ACPL locations, beginning September 30th at Maine, and also at our Pontiac Branch and our Wayne Dill Library. And they are open to the public, as well as our staff. And they will offer flu shots plus the super COVID booster. So you can come out for that. I believe it was last month, I talked about the patron survey we were conducting regarding auto renewal and if our patrons were interested in it. And we had several hundred responses, and I went through every single one of them, and overall, the response was, eh, we don't really know if we need it. They thought that things were going pretty well as is, and the majority of folks didn't really think there was a pressing need to make a change right now. So we're just going to take that information and sit on it for a bit, and we're not going to be proposing anything new about auto renewal right now. I will say there were several comments asking us to consider going fine-free for everybody and not just children. So that is something that we're going to be doing additional research on, and will quite possibly be presenting a proposal in the coming months about that. We are conducting yet another survey right now, and I just checked it a few hours ago, and we're up to over 200 responses. It is focused on educators and homeschoolers seeing what kind of special services and additional programming and resources that they would find beneficial from ACPL. So more on that when that survey is completed. Also, we entered into an agreement with a company called Rave Alert, and this is a company that I learned about at a recent American Library Association conference, but I know Aja worked with previously in her previous role at Ivy Tech, and LeAnn, our events coordinator, also worked with them at PFW in her previous role. They are a service that provides emergency alerts, messaging, and panic buttons for staff at all locations. And it will allow us to quickly communicate with employees in the event of safety threats and severe weather. And we are working with Shannon, our new security manager, and Aja to roll this out to the staff in the coming weeks. And that is my written report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Susan, when exactly are you doing your puppet show? What time?
I'm doing it Sunday at 2:00.
All right. Just want to know.
There's a turtle involved, yes.
Any other questions? Sounds like pretty busy times here.
It is.
I just actually just want to make a comment. Again, we had the collection management report that was provided. Again, really, really well done. I think this really does exactly what we wanted to, to provide that information to us in black and white. So I appreciate that.
We appreciate that. And Nate is transitioning that task over to Matt. You see Matt's name on it this time.
Yeah.
Great. Are there any items of new business that should come before the body? Any old business that we've, Paul, did you have your hand? I thought.
No.
You bought the item. Okay, how about public comment? Quiet day at River Gulch, okay. Well, hearing none, seeing none, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Or nay? And we are adjourned.
Thank you.